Go ahead, call the meeting in order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and whose soul with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Lehman?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Nally?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here. I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Uh, moving on to legislative report.
Yeah, yes, I've sent some information regarding various, um, cut and paste from the OSBA site to all the board members and Superintendent Hurt. And, you know, so somebody from the public is interested in that, they can call her and, uh, and get that. But a couple of things I would mention, the, um, with the lame duck session that was, that's going on, there's a couple of different things, uh. There's a push for the parents' Bill of Rights that is being pushed, um. And I, I think it has some specifics and, uh, our, uh, representative is continuing to push to get uh, the religious education piece during the day, uh, move from a May per district to a shall. And what I had read was a couple of the districts around the Columbus area have, it sounds like they had approved, um, kind of the religious education piece coming in during the day, but they've pulled back out and, uh, so there's, there's some not clarity to that situation. Um, but again, it's, it's something that's being pushed in particular by our representative. Um, also, there's a, um, House Bill two oh six, which deals with expulsion of students uh, from a school for actions that are dan- endanger other students and uh, school employee, uh, health and safety. And, and I think what that does basically, uh, is give a little bit more latitude to the superintendent in terms of how long and kind of a return for a student that is way out of line. Does that sound? Good explain?
Yes, I believe that that is, that you, I believe you're accurate in what you're saying.
Um, there's also, uh, one bill that I thought was kind of neat was, uh, the children of military personnel, can continue to attend and receive transportation to a school that they're attending if the parent no longer is in active duty. Uh, apparently there was, uh, some issues where students, um, had, had to be kind of in moving with the parents or move in, uh, districts, so, uh, there's some, uh, clarity there. But those are just a couple of the things that are going on. Again, it's a lame duck session and who knows what all is gonna get pushed through and, and accepted. So, uh, I would just encourage you to read some of those cutouts that I forwarded to you that have some pertinent information to read. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, no walk-on items tonight?
None, thank you.
Uh, no one is here from the community to speak, so we can go ahead and skip that part. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, Mr. Price, board members, Ms. Parkhurst, um, this evening I am presenting to you two calendars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. According to the FEA negotiated agreement, the union representation will begin the development of that calendar in October, which has happened. The committee met on October twenty-fourth with representatives, elementary level, the middle school level, and at the high school level, as well as building and district level administration, um, and OPSI representation as well. FEA followed the language in their negotiated agreement and they, um, shared two sample con- um, calendars, options with their entire membership. The returned vote indicated a preference for option A, so this evening you've received option A and option B. Um, please know that, um, our FEA membership has returned the vote of the preference of option A. Policy ICICA requires communication with our joint vocational school districts, as well as our chartered non-public, um, to which we transport students. Um, with that, the district has reached out to Vanguard Center Career and Tech Center, as well as Bishop Huffman Catholic Schools. And we've communicated the calendars with them in November, so again, within that timeline. Um, policy requires a public notice of today, so those calendars are now public, and then we will return um, in January with the calendar on the approve, um, for approval on the agenda. So if you have questions as you review those, please, um, reach out and ask us and we'll try to answer those, those items. There are no major changes in the calendar that, to bring forward with you for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, there are some items of interest that will remain the same, and I would just like to highlight those. Um, within the suggested calendar, we would maintain a staggered start for our students at the beginning of the school year. We have found, um, that to be very beneficial for both students and families and staff, um, to be able to anchor in those start dates, um, to specific grade levels. You will also see on the, the suggested calendar, a, the continuation of the kindergarten kickoff that was new this year, um, where we had an opportunity for all of our incoming kindergarten students to have a day in their building. Um, where we were able to collect, our staff was able to collect some information on those students and very much helped us prepare for success, um, of the school year, so we would like to continue that. Uh, you will notice that we have worked to place our professional development days on either a Friday or a Monday. Um, we've heard from our parents in the last couple of years that that benefits them because it gives some app, option of a potential long weekend, um, for our families, and if they would like to, um, schedule appropriately, then, then that gives them a nice opportunity. You'll also notice that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is off again, that's something we've done for many years. There's a scheduled winter and spring break. Um, and one thing that is new last year that we added in haste, and this year we included as a planned piece, was to make sure that we had a parent teacher conference opportunity in both semesters. Um, so although we haven't done it yet for the second year, um, to be able to have that winter parent teacher conference, we are anticipating from our successes last year that, that will be a plus to have an opportunity to touch base um, with families and allow information to be shared about students. So there's just some highlights for those calendar pieces. Again, I'll bring those back to you in January. Um, the other update that I would like to share with you is the recent bedbug concerns that we all heard about last week at Ross High School, two weeks ago, actually. Um, as stated in my letter last week to our Ross families, um, this was an extremely isolated incident that was contained in one classroom space. I'm, excuse me, I'm happy to inform you that our outside exterminating company revisited this, the site this past Friday. Um, that is standard procedure after applying the prescribed pesticide that we asked them to do on Friday, December sixth. Upon their visit, we received a report from them that there was no issues when they, we received that, that report this morning. So I am clear to tell you that there has been nothing found, nothing seen, and nothing reported since Thursday, December fifth. So I'm very happy to share that, um, update with all of our community. Um, I have copies of all of those official documentations from Central Exterminating in my office. Um, and as elected officials, if, if you're getting questions, or if you would like to, you know, see those documents, they're all public record, I'm happy to share those with you. Um, if that is helpful at all, please just let me know, but I'm very happy, um, to report the status of where we are at this time. Thank you. Um, any questions on either of those two items? All right, then with your permission, I will go ahead with recommendations.
Okay.
All right, the first item I believe we need to do is appoint the president pro tem for the organizational meeting scheduled for January thirteenth.
All right, so, um, what we do is we just come up as a board, appoint that president pro tem, for those of you that are new to this. Um, I'm president, but it ends tonight, so we have to have one to get us through the organizational meeting at the beginning of our next meeting. Then whoever the new president is for twenty twenty-five will take over and do, um, the regular meeting then in January. So, um, it's just a matter of, uh, us appointing one and then, um, taking roll call on that, so.
I'm gonna make a motion that Tom Price, um, serve in that role of president pro tem.
I'm fine with that, it's only about ten minutes long.
Right.
I was gonna second before you started talking.
All right, I should have let that go through first before you. Any other nominations? All right, um, so I guess we'll put, I mean, we'll take roll call on it, but.
Yep. We, I put your name in there and then I'll put it on minutes.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Um, Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price? I don't think I.
Staying.
Okay.
Just be on the safe side. Okay, so I'll be president pro tem to get us through the organizational meeting. Um, so that organizational meeting slash tax budget hearing that we have to do by law, um, will precede our regular meeting on January thirteenth. So same start time, six PM, we'll just do the organizational and tax meeting first. Um, then we'll move right into our regular meeting, so. Okay?
Wonderful, thank you. Um, item number one is to consider approval for our donations. Um, yet what, once again, um, oh, just a gener- the generosity of our community. Um, everything from clothes, clothing items to, um, holiday items, to many different, um, personal items for our students, whether those be personal hygiene items, or hats and scarves, um, socks and underwear, um, truly just items that are needed for our students, sometimes just to maintain themselves through the day, um, to be able to enjoy recess a little bit differently, um, so just wonderful items, so if you, with your approval there, um, for those donations, please.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Um, item number two, I would ask for your approval of a contract with then design architect, TDA, um, so that we can start some conversations about the Ross High School and Aditorium Connector, uh, that building project. Um, this would allow us to start to get some construction documents, some blueprints, um, some design, um, very superficial pieces, but necessary to get us started.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Think that'll be a nice, easy project, TDA was great to work with, they're the ones who built the high school, so, um, makes sense that we have them right there again, they were on site before, so, and it was a great relationship before, so.
Very good.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Mr. Price, just to clarify, this starts the process, but then we would be getting into an additional contract when we're ready to.
Correct, they're just the architect, they're gonna, I, I believe what they did with the high school, they got a lot of stakeholders' opinions on stuff, feedback on stuff, just to have an idea of what people that will use that, that part of the building, what is a good use for it, just to get those ideas, then that comes to administration and to the board, then we finally decide, but yeah, there still has to be a project, or a construction company, or general contractor, all that fun stuff, so yeah, this is just to get the ball rolling to start something.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, um, item number three, this is to consider the approval of a purchase of an amplification sound system right here at Fremont Middle School. Um, and I hope you all saw the adjusted, um, the, the incorrect, uh, dollar amount that you had earlier in the draft, missing the dollar sign. Um, so I want to make sure that you note that correction, um, and this would be an O three four fund expenditure. Um, so a couple of, couple of details here with this project. First of all, this is a sound applica- amplification system that would be used in every classroom and throughout the entire building. All of our buildings have sound systems like this built in, they are part of the OFCC, um, manual when we are building. Um, in this building, it is our oldest building in the, in the district, so these materials are twelve-plus years old. Um, so we are starting to see some of those items and some of those technology items start to decrease their, um, their ability to be used. So this would be, um, a change-up for this entire building here. Um, I will let Megan speak a little bit to that O three four account, if there's any questions. I know that that's a, a maintenance fund that's been set aside to help us with these kinds of projects.
So as part of these building projects that we've done with OFCC, we have to set aside, um, a certain percentage each year from our real estate tax collection that comes into our per- permanent improvement fund. Um, so every year in May or June, you will see a board agenda item that says, I believe it's right around three, four hundred thousand dollars to move it from O O three, which is our permanent improvement fund into O thirty-four, which would be this construction, um, maintenance fund. So that's something you have to do, and it's a good practice for us so that we do have money set aside every year to do service contracts for the buildings, um, and then any repairs that are going to come up. And just think when the elementaries all need new roofs, it's gonna be every single one all at once. So we try to make sure that we have money set aside for those future projects, but it's something we have to do, and there's very restricted, um, items that we can use it for. It can only be for the buildings that we built, the schools that, not any of our, not our admin building, not, um, the aditorium, none of those. Um, Mr. Ianway and I have discussions all the time, just to make sure everything that we're using, um, is appropriate that comes out of that fund, so.
So the dollars that, um, are, are there specific dollars for the middle school? Is it broken out that way, or is it one?
It's just one pot, um.
That's okay, yes.
But it, but it started with the building of this middle school, so that's when we first, those funds originated.
Okay. Thank you.
So we've been doing it for the past twelve years.
What is the lifespan tip? I know technology is ever-changing, but are, are we doing? Ah, good one. Um, are we doing this every ten or twelve years? Are we doing this every, like, is this the appropriate? Time span?
I'm gonna say that we probably got very lucky to have, um, a technology item in place for, for a ten-year window. Um, it is something that continues to evolve and change, um, gets smaller, gets better, gets faster, you know, all of those, those things. Um, but I would say that a ten-year window, eight to twelve maybe is a, is a span, a range.
And at the risk of sounding like my parent, um, I'm about to sound real here. Um, is this like an amplification system, is that like the PA system?
That's a great question, I apologize, I should have been more clear. Um, this is an opportunity so that within the instructional setting, um, I'm gonna make it just really basic, and it looks a lot of different ways. This allows for the teacher, the person who's providing the primary instruction, to wear, um, a microphone, something close to them. And then there's two different ways that we can, um, that we can assist with that. So the first piece is almost like a surround sound right there within the classroom, and it just amplifies that, makes it a little bit clearer for all of our students.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we do have some students with some additional need, who maybe have a device that pairs up with what my teacher's wearing, um, so that they hear things a little bit even more clear and more concise directly for them. So it allows us an opportunity to just make language, um, with that instruction, just a little more crystal clear, little less background.
Nice. Yeah, I would have that all wrong if you would have left me to my own, uh, to make up what that was.
Mrs. Abernathy, did I do okay on that one? Thank you.
Does this have the ability to coordinate with, um, security and any of that? Um, you know, how we talked where some schools have the teachers that are wearing?
Um, I think that that would be a different component.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, I really believe this is just, um, that amplification of data in, data out aspect.
Our teachers eventually could be wearing thirty or forty chains as we.
How that technology continues to develop, Mr. Nally? Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll tell you, and not that it's a smaller part than this, but, um, it's amazing the technology. There's a middle school girl who's on the wrestling team who is hearing impaired. So she has, um, an earpiece and she's wrestling, and it's amazing to see how that happens, but there is a device, it's this big, I mean, it looks like a little oval, and it hangs around your neck. And literally, we can be in the wrestling room, and whatever coach is wearing that, we, we practice with the middle school boys, so it's pretty loud in there. I can talk like this, and I can be at the other end of the wrestling mat, and she can hear any instruction through that into her ear, same with that wrestling, we had a wrestling meet yesterday, headgear on and everything in the middle of the gym, and the coach is sitting in the chair, and we're instructing her, but it's just a normal voice, because she can't hear anything, and I mean, and we explained to the refs, and, but anyway, so.
And that's a great example of what the sample.
How that technology has evolved, I mean, I'd have never thought that was something that, I mean, but it's amazing to see that here's this girl out wrestling on a mat, and she can hear us just talking like this. And of course, Chad Long, our wonderful, one of our coaches, he likes to always play with her, so he'll start speaking Spanish into it while she's trying to wrestle in and practice. I'm like, Chad, you don't speak Spanish very well, stop. She laughs at it, though, but it's.
That's good that she laughs.
But the technology is amazing, what, I, I mean, it's just more and more stuff for students, it's just crazy.
Absolutely.
Um, can I get a motion to approve item three, please? Sorry.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Very good, thank you so much. Item number four is the agreement between the Sineski County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Fremont City Schools. Um, there is a slight increase in this dollar amount, um, but it was to be expected. Um, as we planned for this year, it is based on the number of students, Fremont City School students that are, um, being educated, um, at the School of Hope.
Can I get a motion to approve item four, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Bloom, Mrs. Bloom, sorry, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion?
Just a ballpark, how many students? Let go.
I was thinking nine, eleven, I think approximately eleven. Thank you, Mrs. Abernathy.
Abby, I would just say that last year you were on this, so. We're used to having that, where's Mr. Boss when you need him?
We will let him know he was missed.
Well, wait, let's not go there. Any other discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Wonderful, item number five is a wrestling, um, trip. It is an overnight trip, so therefore it does need to come to the board agenda. Um, and that was this past weekend, the thirteenth and fourteenth, we had high school wrestlers on their way to Solon, Ohio.
Can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Um, item number six is very similar, our wrestlers will be traveling to Defiance High School, um, after Christmas, this is December's twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Can I have a motion to approve item six, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number seven, I'd like to request your approval, um, for the authorization to enter into, um, an agreement with Ohio Schools Council. This will allow for Ohio School Council to act as our bidding agent. Um, we are in the market for four school buses, um, to help build out our fleet and bring, make sure that we are staying up to date with that fleet.
Can I have a motion to approve item seven, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
Mr. Ianway, thank you for the information that you provided.
Yep, I, I was gonna say the same thing, just to have it detailed out for us, so we can see the age of our fleet and where we're sitting and, and everything else that helped immensely to understand what we have, so.
Are we members of the Ohio Schools Council, or is that something we have?
We have a membership, um, if you remember from last meeting, I believe, that was our utilities program that we were in for savings, um.
Okay, oh, so that's all?
Yeah.
So they do a lot of different services?
They do a lot of different services for us that, um, we take advantage of being able to be part of their consortium.
Super. Good.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Um, item number eight, I would ask you to consider the approval to terminate our existing, um, contract with North Central Ohio Educational Service Center. Um, we have been a member of NCO ESC since two thousand and eight, and at this time, we would like to consider new options, um, going forward. And I would like you to note that there is, our contract is in place through June of two thousand twenty-five, and there. And there should be no changes to our staff or our services for the remainder of this school year.
Can I get a motion to approve item eight, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
I guess. Just real quick, can you just give a highlight as to? What the going to North Point would? What are the advantages? Up three things.
The items that we've communicated with our staff thus far is that we are looking for some additional options with professional development. We are also trying to build our communication base. And there was a third item and it just left my brain. I'm very sorry, Mr. Nally. That we we are just hoping really to just have a a different option moving forward. Many of the services that the Educational Service Centers across Ohio offer are very similar. And again, we've been in contract with North Central since 2008. And so this would give us just an opportunity to move forward with looking at some different opportunities.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Fantastic. Items number nine through 30. Are the second reading of our policies. This, these were all brought to you last time and we had a little bit more detail about them on that first reading. So this evening, if you have no other questions about them, I would just ask for your approval for items nine through 30.
Again, a motion to approve items nine through 30, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Switching gears to our students this evening. Item number 31 is the approval to grant a Ross High School diploma to Mason Gahn. We have been notified by Gateway Program that he has completed all requirements necessary for a high school diploma in Ohio and Fremont City Schools.
Can I get a motion to approve item 31, please? Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
In our staff areas this evening, item 32 brings us. Many more retirements. And I would just like to note, beginning with Greg Gallagher, Todd Plant, Steve Powell, Victoria Gamboa and Leela Tomlin. That we have a combined 98.5 years of service to Fremont City School students and staff. So a huge congratulations to all of those individuals who are seeking your approval on their retirements and resignations. Item 33 begins our appointments. You'll see that we have some certified staff subs, which we are always very excited about. And then at the top of the next page, we have some appointments for the remainder of this school year for a variety of positions. Both cooks and custodians and student monitors and maintenance. So beginning with Lenny Belcher, ending with Christopher Sutton, I would ask that you approve those. And then yet again, we have that support staff substitute. We have talked about our, the value of our substitutes previously. Those are just key positions for us. Item 34 begins with our supplemental contracts. Many of those individuals are returning to us to their roles. Natalie Biddle and Casey Fisher are on that list. They are both new to us in this position, not new to Fremont City Schools, either one of them. And farther down on that page, we have three more supplemental duty positions. And I would like to recognize Aaron Hammer, who is new to us. Kyle and Matthew are returning to their positions. Item 36, that meet manager for the swimming program, both for Phil Moran and Pride Yost. That is for an outside event that it was not, it was located at Fremont City Schools. But we had rented our facility to Sandusky. Their facility is under construction and was not yet ready for their meet this past weekend. So they rented our facility and we were good neighbors. And I would just like to acknowledge then some of our student workers in item 36 and 37. Very happy to have those students involved. Item 38 is just some status changes for individuals who have been recognized, providing us some of that outside experience.
Can I get a motion to approve items 32 through 38, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion?
Holy crap.
Roll call, please.
Oh, gosh.
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number 39 is an opportunity for you to approve all of the members that have been participating in our K5 ELA Committee. These individuals have done, have already done a some, a significant amount of work to help us as a district to move closer to that new series. That will guide our English Language Arts Instruction in K5. And now we are up to the point where they will be doing some evaluation of the curriculum materials and connecting that, those materials to our standards that they're held to teach. And looking for some alignment between the two of those and helping us determine if there are gaps where those would be. And this will be outside of, this work will be completed outside of their contractual time. So we are asking per their contract for that $25 per hour for them.
Can I get a motion to approve item 39, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yeah.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to reported the treasurer.
Good evening. My staff and I were able to attend Nowaka on last Friday and attend their year end closing. Or year end calendar closing meeting is very informative with having two new staff members to the department back in spring. This is their first time for W2 season, 1099 season, closing out month, or closing, closing out the calendar year end. So this was a really good time for us to get with, we attended it in person. So that they could have some face time with those staff members who at Nowaka. They really are amazing and they hold our hands. They reach out if something's not looking correct. Thank God we've never had this issue, but if you were not to have your file to them quick enough to print W2s by the deadline, they're reaching out to you going, hey, what's going on? Those ladies at Nowaka, I cannot speak enough for, we're very fortunate to have them. So we were able to attend that and then afterwards we huddled up together and went over. Okay, so those of us that have worked through this, this is what to expect. This is what I need you guys to work on. This is your focus and kind of go over those roles for the end of the year. Some of my staff is lucky to have very little of that, so they will be enjoying Christmas break. But we just kind of got ready for this big time because we've got W2s and 1099s. And those are some pretty big deals for people and we want to make sure we get them to them in a timely manner. And then if we can move on to my items for recommendation.
Okay.
First, I have the November financials. This is really another reinstatement of the five year forecast that we went over. Again, I'm going to highlight the fact that real estate collection was not down this year compared to last year. It's just was splitting out that public utility so we can watch the pipeline money better. The, with those two being separated this year, it looks like it went down, but actually our collections were up a little bit. We're still doing good with interest. It's still nice to have that little bit of extra oomph. But as we've seen with the economy, that's probably going to cut down coming up, but take advantage of it while it lasts. Expenses, it's nice, benefits have been running flat for a few months, but. Our insurance rates did go up the first pay in December. And you will see that in reflected in the December financials, there will be an increase in the benefits just because. While yes, the employees had an increase, the district sees that increase as well. Because it's on the whole rate of the plan, not just employees picking up that increase. We had some bigger purchases last year. That were kind of those technology pieces that we had upgraded that we didn't see this year. So supplies and. Equipment look like they went down, but it's just because we had some unusual purchases. And this is our, luckily our cash flow is pretty good. We have 90 days true day cash. December is our little bit leaner cash flow. Because in late January, early February, we'll see those real estate collections come in. So our two big influxes of January, February and July and August, we see those big kicks. So December, it starts getting a little bit less than what we normally carry.
Edit on the financials? Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Can I get a motion to approve item 40, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Lewis.
We're throwing our voices.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Sorry about that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Okay, for item 41, these are some permanent appropriation changes. Really what this boils down to is our girls' basketball and boys' wrestling work the concession stand this fall. And we're able to get some of the proceeds from that and they would like to be able to spend them. So we had to appropriate that cash so that they can make those purchases. I believe the girls' basketball, I know is looking at some warm up gear that would be really beneficial to the girls' basketball team.
Can I get a motion to approve item 41, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to board member communication, Don.
Uh, real quick. The third area was HR support.
Yes, it was.
You know, we, we had talked previously and I kind of hit you up with that same question. So I just happened to have my note.
You are correct.
The other thing. Crystal Walker. I saw that this is the first time I think I've ever seen the agenda not have your name on it. You're slacking. But. But with that said, thank you for. Volunteering to help out in so many different areas and. It's, it's a positive thing for the kids and the district. Thank you, Chris. The other thing is, I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Halloween. That's all I have.
Right, Sarah?
Just a few things, I wanted to just kind of give a special shout out to all of the custodial staff. Above and beyond what they do to keep all of our buildings in working order and looking good and smelling good and all of those things. But just, there's always something happening at our schools, which is a wonderful thing. But that means somebody has to be here to maintain those things. And I, I know our staff works really hard. On those even Saturdays and Sundays. So I just, I've been in the buildings on a few weekends here recently and I just wanted to give a, a special shout out to, to all of, all of them. Continued good luck to all of our winter sports and clubs and organizations. I did not fact check what I'm about to say next, but I was told by a certain head bowling coach, Mark Lyric. That they are the only undefeated Fremont Ross winter sports team right now. So he just, they're having a great season and just continued good luck to them as well. To all of our high school students, this is the week for you to really show up. So we have exams this week. The goal is not to figure out the minimum that you have to do to pass your exam in the class. See, the teachers in the house giving me a little bit of a, yeah, buddy. It's to get the best grade you can. I rehearsed this speech on my own child today on the way in. So do really neat things like study, ask questions, get good sleep, eat breakfast. And have a, have a good attitude about your, your exams this week. And lastly, like Mr. Now, Mr. Nally said, to all the faculty, staff, students and families, have a wonderful Christmas break. And we'll see everybody back in January.
Laura?
Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I'll say that before I forget and get carried away. My first thing I want to say is the children or the, I should say the kids, the kids and the teachers that decorated this pod. Man, you guys did an excellent, excellent job. It's a definitely an eye catcher when you walk in here. It's awesome. I'm all about decor. So yeah, I made it from the gingerbread houses to, well, everything that's in here. It's very. Very festive, yeah, very worth the season. So that and just the Vanguard kids, they stopped in where I work today. They started their rounds, I think it's today and tomorrow, they're hitting their regular nursing homes of the Fremont area. And they always do such a good job. They make these gift shoeboxes for the residents and I mean, I'm telling you, what it does for the residents, it just puts such a smile on their face. And again, I think it does just for the kids as it does for the residents. So it's just always, it's fun. It's fun to see them come in, load everything up, they care all. It's just fun. It's a very fun environment. They're there just for a little bit, but they're there long enough and they get joy out of it and I can tell in their face and that's what it's all about. So I want to thank the Vanguard kids for once again coming to our facility today and taking some time out to share with us. Well, thank you.
Lori?
Want to congratulate Mason Gahn on his diploma. It's amazing. It's really a great accomplishment. Congratulations to all the people that are retiring. I mean. That's a, enjoy your, you know, your time now. And just have a happy Christmas, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and be safe and everybody come back in January.
Thanks again to the community for the donations, all the support that they give our schools and our kids. It's always amazing every month, every day that we see things. It doesn't matter where you look, there's someone volunteering for something from our community. So thank you for all that support. Good luck to all the teams over the Christmas break and hope everyone has a good Christmas.
I have one more thing I forgot to say.
Of course you do.
Hashtag guilty. Just thank you for the staff, for the faculty, for being here today. I, I like seeing teachers faces here, so thank you for that.
Right, with that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yeah.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Meeting's adjourned.